Welcome everyone to our Williamsport City Council Meeting. It's Thursday, February 13th. We're at Trade and Transit Two, Third Floor.
Okay, I will call the meaning to order.
Welcome everyone.
I love the 30 second lag.
Williamsport City Council Meeting. It's Thursday, February 13th. Please rise for the invocation by Councilwoman Bonnie Katz, followed by the flag salute and roll call.
We gather together here tonight intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
United States of America. It stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, approval of city council meeting minutes from January 30th, 2025. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Any comments, questions, changes to the minutes? Here you can see none. Mrs. Frank, one item three.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Item four, limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests tonight. Item five, Mrs. Frank.
Ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the certified ordinances of Williamsport, Pennsylvania.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
So this is an annual ordinance that we do every year. This is really just kind of factoring in and getting everything finally codified that we enacted last year. This is really just a housekeeping ordinance that we do every year. You know, nothing super out of the ordinary of it. Janice, thank you very much for, you do this every year. I'm grateful that you're able to do it for us. I'm kind of getting it together and keep this moving along. So thank you for your hard work on it. Any comments or questions on item five? Here you can see none. Mrs. Frank, then on the motion for first reading, item five.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. We'll move to item six, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance amending codified three, five, three property tax abatement industrial and commercial first reading.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
In the second, Ms. Fessler, good evening.
Hi, good evening, members of council. So the ordinance that you have in front of you is for the industrial and commercial LERTA. Jason Fink is also here on behalf of the chamber to add on a little bit to what I have to say and then also answer any questions that you have. So LERTA is the local economic revitalization tax assistance law, and it is time for us to update our ordinance and also to extend it. So we're proposing to extend the ordinance through December 31st, 2026, and by doing so, our ordinance will be in line with the school district and like Humming County's proposed ordinance. Jason actually has the information about the county's proposed ordinance that they're putting through. Our specific ordinance that you have in front of you, there's just, other than changing the date, there's one small change to it that you can see. We've just removed the ability to apply for pre-approval for LERTA and just to streamline our process a little bit. So if you have any questions for me or any questions for Jason, he's here.
Um, any comments or questions, Mr. Byder?
Have we had anybody take advantage of the LERTA program since we enacted it?
Yes, we have. So I can only speak to individuals who or companies who have taken advantage of it since I took this position. But I think that we've probably processed six or seven applications since July of last year when I came into the position.
And then, Mr. Fink, is it something that has been beneficial to the Chamber of Commerce to help attract new businesses into the area?
First of all, thank you, council. Appreciate you taking the time to consider this. It is actually a key tool and the great thing about LERTA is you are not giving up any existing taxes that you're receiving. What you're doing is you're aiding the development to take place by letting them gradually get up to what the assessed value of the property is. I can set a couple of examples where you've seen that happen already. Everybody's excited about Wawa being here, or most everybody, I should say, probably. But that is one of the ones that benefited from it, and the developers utilize that to be able to get that because that was a challenged property. You look at some of the environmental challenges that they had to deal with. They also have, everybody's looking forward to it. Chick-fil-A is coming in, breaking, they've already broken ground, but you'll see that starting to go up here in April. There's also another piece of property right there as well that they are looking at being able to get some development. There, there are other components of this from the commercial and industrial side of it that you'll see within the city. The other key thing is that you'll also be voting on the night is the residential side of it, which to me is actually more exciting because the city is challenged to be able to get development on the residential side of it. However, as you can see in the paper, there are articles about the rest of the county where there's housing taking place. The city is challenged. And to be able to get something like this, to be able to help with the residential as a resident in the city, to me, that's even better because of the fact that you will be able to help incentivize not only redevelopment of existing homes and hopefully increase their property values, but also some of the vacant lots that somebody could step in and build on. We have a number of them. We, you know, I drive by them every day, and it's something that I think would be a very good tool, and you are seeing some of that take place as well. The West End of the city, you're seeing that take place, and those will be taxed at the full value. And those homes are $250,000 to $300,000 homes. So to me, that's the exciting side of all the LERTA discussion. I apologize for the long answer, but it's something I think is a very key tool, and one again, I go back to, you're not giving anything up.
Yep. Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions?
Adam, I do.
Yes, Mrs. Katz.
Jason, this is for you. First of all, we've known what the LERTA has done for the city for many, many years. It's been a great benefit. I think just to clarify for people who are watching, don't understand why the county and school district is involved. Would you like to give a brief explanation of that?
Yes, what the state, the state law requires that the ordinance be passed by a minimum of two of the three taxing bodies within that given jurisdiction to be able to get it enacted. The school district, as noted, has already approved theirs. Theirs was actually approved for a lengthier period of time when they enacted it initially. And what we're asking for is both the city and the county to be able to extend their LERTAs to match up with the sunset of the school district, which will be 1231 of 2026. But again, you need, it can't just be one taxing body. It has to be at least two of the three. Ideally, all three because everybody then has skin in the game.
Yeah. And we have, sorry, Mrs. Scotts, go ahead.
The other thing is, we've never really been that successful with homeownership with LERTA. I think we've got to promote it more, and maybe they don't understand, the public doesn't understand how to go about this. But like you said, it would be a great benefit all the way around.
Yeah, no, and I will say, you know, we are seeing some of that now taking place with some of the home. Burke's Homes has a set of homes on the West End that they've actually have out on the market. In addition, I think the key thing is, is there's some other developments that I know of that are looking at the city in particular to be able to do some developments that way as well on the residential side. So if this is able to be passed, I think that'll be another key incentive to be able to get those developments to take place.
Thank you, Jason.
Any other comments or questions? Now, this is great. I mean, we're aligning with the other two bodies. I think it's great that all three have passed this. I know when we went through this, what was it? Was it two years ago now? Somewhere, somewhere in there. I think we were the first ones to go to really get that ball moving. And so it's, it is a logistical challenge, challenge, whatever you want to call it, working with three bodies to do this. So just appreciate the chambers' efforts in kind of getting this to where it's at. Our Community Economic Development's Office and getting, getting this to where it's at and this, this last final hurdle. And I hope we can continue to see the progress that this is being as a catalyst for economic development in the city specifically, so.
And Bonnie, to add to your question slash concern about the public knowing about it, our office is working closely with Gary and the Codes Department so that when folks are going in to apply for building permits, they're proactively given the information. They don't have to just magically know about LERTA and know how to seek out the information. So it's proactively being provided to them moving forward with Gary's assistance.
Good.
I'm happy to hear that because it can be used so useful throughout the city, and our, and our housing leaves a lot to be desired in different areas.
Yeah. All right. Any other final comments, questions? Here you can see none. Mrs. Frank, on first reading.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. We'll move to item seven, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance amending codified ordinance three, five, five property tax abatement residential in first reading.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second, Ms. Fessler, Mrs. Or Mr. Fink, sorry. Anything to add from our previous discussion?
No.
Any additional comments or questions from members? All right, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank, one item seven, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Thank you both very much.
Appreciate it.
Resolution authorizing professional and administrative services between the city and CEDACOG for environmental review services for the Willow Street project.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second.
It's me again. I'll add that Jamie Schroeder from CEDACOG is also available on Zoom if you have any specific questions for her. This resolution authorizing an environmental review for the project at Willow Street is essentially to meet the HUD guidelines. So the Willow Street project, the Old City Revitalization that's taking place. There were funds put into the project from CDBG, and because we did that, we are required to do an environmental review before we move forward with construction, and this is the professional services agreement to meet those HUD requirements.
Excellent. This went to Public Works, Mrs. Katz.
Yes, it did. And I, I think Valerie just explained everything. This is just a contract that needs to be fulfilled at this point.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Any additional comments, questions?
What kind of a timeline are we looking at for completion of that project?
Oh, that's a great, great question. The project in itself or the environmental review. The environmental review will happen immediately upon signing this contract, but as far as the actual project, Bill can, he's been working with Dewberry on the engineering and design, so he can give you the update on that.
Yeah, so Willow Street, we're still going through, it's in final design. Some final choices need to be made on the type of the surface we're going to use down there. Looking for plans to be completed, you know, built this year, out the bid and built this year, actually. Yeah.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions from members? Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank, on item eight.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero, and we'll jump to item nine, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution of the city of Williamsport authorizing the execution of a customer facilities intake and income verification administrative services agreement with CEDACOG of government.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second, Ms. Fessler.
As you know, we're working with CEDACOG to administer our CDBG funds, and this agreement will essentially give them the ability to work as an extension of our city staff to do income verification and process eligible applicants for our owner occupied, single family emergency rehabilitation program that individuals in the city can apply for. So this will just allow CEDACOG to assist us in processing those applications.
This also went to Public Works. Anything to add, Mrs. Katz?
Yes, it's interesting because one of my questions was of the involvement with CEDACOG in so many different, you know, areas of community development, and talking to Ms. Fessler, they they're getting involved in with a lot of cities and townships across the state from the standpoint of there are so many rules and regulations that keep on changing that it's very difficult for sometimes for an apartment to keep on top of things. That's the number one. Number two, there's $75,000 in an occupied grant. I'm saying that right, Ms. Fessler?
$75,000 of our 2025 grant funds are being allocated to the owner occupied, single family emergency rehab. Now, I did mention to Bonnie that that dollar amount has not yet been approved by council. It's in the public phase where our plan goes out to the public for public comment, and then once we actually receive our allocation, which will be several months from now, that's when we bring before you our proposed use of that funding, but tentatively, we are allocating $75,000 to that use for this year.
The thing I would like to discuss is Randy has been working with STEP for Lord Randy a good many years, and he brought up a good point of how to work together with community development, CEDACOG, and STEP. Randy, would you like to take over with that for a little bit?
Sure. The STEP has an allocation, has up to this point from the federal government, which makes up actually 85% of the the money that comes into STEP, and it's all spent on the programs which are they're well-known, well-established over the years, like Head Start and transportation, all of those kinds of things. But to leverage your work together, since we have 75,000 available, STEP has hundreds of thousands available, which is currently, there's a high, high, high demand across the city for low-income housing needs in this area. So it is essential for us from an infrastructure point of view, but also from a human point of view, the families that are affected and would be improved with this money. So we don't want to see that dry up from the federal level. There are some, that's just the forefront of a lot of discussion lately, but I think it's, it's worth the city doing what we can to keep those things in place. Some things, there's a lot of waste everywhere, but some things are not wasteful because they really help people that really need the resources that are available through that. So I just thought, you know, maybe a discussion or at least, and I'm sure Valerie's in touch with a lot of people on STEP, so she's well aware of that, but we want to be behind whatever we can do to, to make that a solid footing, keep that on a solid footing.
And Randy, to speak to your point about wanting to continue receiving that federal allocation of HUD funding specifically for us, and Bonnie's point about utilizing CEDACOG, those things go together because we need to be the best stewards that we can be and use our CDBG and home funds as responsibly as possible, and utilizing CEDACOG as a consultant allows us to do that.
Right. That's all.
Jamie from CEDACOG is available if you have any questions for her, but I don't think you do.
Bonnie, Randy, thank you both very much. Are there any other comments or questions from members? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, then, on the motion for item nine, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Thank you, Ms. Fessler, very much. We'll move to, and Ms. Schroeder, thank you for joining us. We appreciate your, your support.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'll move to item 10, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing an MOU between the city of Williamsport and the Williamsport Area School District.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Assistant Chief Bolt.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are we?
Good. How are you?
Very well. Thank you, council. Tonight before you, we have a resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the city of Williamsport and the Williamsport Area School District. It's pertaining to the School Resource Officer Program for the years 2024 through 2025. It is basically a carbon copy of the ones we've had since 2022. It basically outlines the payment structure and the responsibilities for the two SROs that we currently have at the school, which is Sergeant Jody Miller and Officer Thaddeus Trafford. The school fully reimburses us through these terms for, for their their work and their presence in the high school and, and the other surrounding schools. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to.
Are there any comments or questions from members? What, what's the, has the rate changed? I mean, I think that's, that's always kind of the question dialogue related to the SRO piece is the rate, just to make sure.
Yeah, the rate falls correct, just right in line with what the contracted officer salaries are. So the only change that has gone on in the past three years, four years, has just been the, the contractual increase in their salaries.
Updating the rate essentially in line with what the, with our current contract.
Correct. Other than that, there has been no other changes, and as I said, the school district, we invoice them, they reimburse us for the days that the officers are working at the school district.
Any other comments or questions from members? Okay. Here you can see none, then, Mrs. Frank, on item 10.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll move to item 11.
Resolution appointing a sewage enforcement officer and alternate for the city of Williamsport.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. Mr. Scott, welcome, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, council president, Yoder, members of council. Resolution to present your consideration. This resolution is for appointing a sewage enforcement officer and an alternate SEO for the city. On January 21st, we received an email, city clerk Janice Frank received an email. She passed it on to us. We were notified by the Department of Environmental Protection that we needed to do this, appoint an SEO, an alternate SEO. So that's what we're doing. Um, so that's what we're doing. We did some research. Uh, we're proposing to appoint John Giacomo as the SEO and Mike McLean as the alternate SEO. John works at Old Lightcoming Township. He's their SEO and Mike is at Hepburn Township, the SEO. We've talked to them. Uh, they're both interested. And, uh, they would be willing to do this at fifty-eight dollars an hour, not to exceed sixty dollars an hour.
Um, this was reading Public Works, Mrs. Katz.
Yes, uh, the only statement I really have to make is that these, these men are on as called as needed. Um, they may never be called. So, you know, it's just, it's another law that was put into effect that we have to follow.
Yeah, if I can just add, you know, we have public sewer. This is for any on-lot septics, which, um, I know we do have that at Elm Park, which we're, um, doing a project at Elm Park now, which will be going out to bid, um, uh, this weekend, actually. And you'll see some construction there this summer, and there'll be new bathrooms there. So this will tie into that as well.
That was the other thing too. How many sewers we, you know, there are really, I mean, it's, it was interesting. You know, to, to hear that, uh, you, you would think everything would be city in the city, but it's not. Just a statement.
Um, thank you, Mrs. Katz. Are there any other comments or questions for members?
Um, I just had one, um, and I, I missed this the other day in our, um, committee meeting, but, um, it, there's language in here about, um, the agency collecting fees or, uh, different things like that. Would, would, would that ever be activated under some kind of circumstance?
Um, as far as the DEP agency?
Yeah, the local agency. Um.
We would not, and our sanitary authority is not, not involved. So I would say no.
Okay. I just wondered what that language meant in there for who that applied to.
So, so Bill, can you clarify, is this for like city property or is this for, this is for city property only? So like,
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't like, if there's an issue on my street, this person's gonna come out there and this isn't for private property. This is for public property, like, like parks.
No, it is for private property.
It is for private property.
Absolutely.
But, okay, so it's for any property in the city limits.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then I guess, I mean, where are we pulling any, like, if, if we need to, um, if we need to, if we need to pay for this, like, I guess, like, how are we, do we have any idea of how we're planning to pay for any of these fees? Should we need to deploy these officers? I mean, like, I, I don't, I don't know, like, I mean, so if I'm reading this right, um, four hundred gallons per day. Like, I mean, like, it seems like there's a pretty sizable, like, issue that needs to happen for a sewage enforcement officer to go out, right? Um, so I mean, the, I think the odds of us needing to deploy this person are, are low.
Yes.
Um, to, to nonexistent, but
Right.
Have we, have we identified where we would pay for that if, God forbid, we would need to?
I mean, I haven't looked into much of it, but I would assume if it's a project that the city's doing, it would become part of the project funds that would pay for that. If not, it would come out of some, one of the contracted services in the Public Works area, I would, I would assume. I mean, we would have to pay for it from somewhere, so we would either do that with, or the project, just depending on what, what it's pertains to.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I recognize there's a level of kind of learning here, like, this is a new thing. Um, frankly, that none of us really anticipated needing, right? I mean, I wasn't aware of it. Bill, I know you weren't, so, um, yeah, I know Janice wasn't. Um, so, um, we've at least thought a little bit about like where, we've at least saw a little about the nuance of, you know, financially, should we need this? Where will we? Go.
Thanks.
Thanks. I, like, yeah, those were my only real, real two, so, Mr. Mackey.
Uh, Bill, I'm just curious, when did we find out about, when did we receive this letter?
Uh, I believe, uh, January twenty-first.
Yeah.
I believe. And we, we were supposed to appoint somebody within a month, so we're doing that.
Okay, that was gonna be my next question. What time, what kind of timeframe?
They said they want it done in a month.
Okay.
That's why.
And, and if we didn't have anybody just waiting in the wings, like, it sounds like we did what, you know, what would have been the, the process there? I mean.
I, I don't know. I didn't, yeah, think about that. I've tried to solve the, uh.
And I, I know it's only February, but I'm assuming then this will be a new line item for next year's budget, putting some money aside for this.
Potentially.
See how, see if we spend any money on it this year. Hopefully we don't.
Um, yeah, potentially.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Bider. You'd mentioned that the two gentlemen already have this position in other municipalities, but what are their qualifications that, that allow them to do this? Do they have to have any kind of state license?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there's certifications. You have to take training, pass test to be an SEO. You, you can look them up, which I did. Uh, there's a form. I think I passed it on to, uh, Janice. It has their, their license number. You know, I have that here. I don't know if you guys got that, but they're registered at the state as SEOs.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would, I would think as we, I, I don't know how soon, but I would think as we see this potentially utilized, the, the, learn about just the kind of ins and outs of it. I, I mean, depending on the demand, this might be something we look at, at doing in-house, whether it's certifying a, a current staff member. I mean, if it's a large volume, I mean, probably not, but I, I think that's, I assume that's part of the the learning element to this is just kind of understanding like what's this really gonna look like for us on a somewhat consistent basis.
Yeah, I contacted the sewer authority. They do not have anyone with SEO certification.
Really?
Well, public sewer, they don't need that.
Okay.
You know, that's, so it didn't really surprise me, but, yeah.
Okay.
Just because there's no on-lot systems really in the city. Only one I know is Elm Park.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Um, any other comments or questions? Okay. Here you can see none, Mrs. Frank on item eleven.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. We'll move to item twelve.
Resolution for professional services agreement with Brick for Bowman Field.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Scott.
Yes, good evening again. Um, want to present a resolution for consideration. This resolution authorizes Bricks Design Group um, out of Williamsport here, um, to provide profi- professional engineering services uh, with, we have to design a new netting system at Bowman Field. Um, this will be funded under the PA DCED, Department of Community Economic Development through a tourism grant, which we recently received. Um, the project will focus on replacing existing netting and adding new netting to extend further along the first and third base lines. Uh, this has to cover all spectator areas. The project looks to replace protective netting between the field of play and the spectator seating and viewing areas. The project will include the following work. Task one is project kickoff and preliminary design. Task two is bidding and construction administration for a total lump sum not to exceed the figure of twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars.
Um, this went to Public Works as well. Mrs. Katz, anything to add?
Um, first of all, I, I didn't read the whole resolution at first, and I, I got down to twenty-five thousand. I thought, wow, are we getting a deal with netting? Cause I knew that was expensive. Um, then understanding that, of course, this is just the engineering cost. Uh, the netting itself is gonna run, Mr. Scott, what, about, about over a hundred thousand, right?
Yeah. One-fifth possible, two-hundred is a preliminary estimate.
And the netting does, yeah, because it, you cannot take that up and down. You really can't. And there is, there is a life existence of this netting. Um, Mr. Scott, did you ever find out what the netting, uh, that we've already had up? Have we replaced that? I didn't ask that question at Public Works. Do you know?
Doug has sent some emails, Doug Estes from the Cutters. I keep seeing around two thousand eighteen, nineteen, some work, I believe. That's before my time, but that rings a bell to anyone. Maybe back then, some new netting was put up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, and I just, I didn't remember what the lifespan is of this. And I think this is something that, you know, hopefully we can continue to get grants because this is quite expensive to do, I, you know, every, every few years. And I, and when I say few, it's few, you know, but still in all, you gotta come up with the money somewheres. And, uh, this is MLB that is stating this, and I think it's for every ball field. Uh, to make everything safe for, for the people that are sitting behind, you know, the, the game. So, um, other than that, I didn't, oh, that's the other question. The twenty-five thousand, five hundred, is that under the grant? Where is that one? Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Okay, and that's all I have right now.
Um, Val, just to clarify, the grant is for specifically like Bowman Field. This, this is through the, I forget the name of it, but essentially like the sports, right?
Okay.
The sports marketing tourism.
Okay.
All right. Um, any, any questions, any comments? Okay. Um, here you can see none then, Mrs. Frank on item twelve.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Item thirteen, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution for professional services agreement with WSP for PPL transmission line.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Scott.
Good evening again. Um, another resolution to present. This resolution authorizes ex- execution of a work order number ten agreement between WSP and the city. WSP is our consultant engineer for the levy. They will provide support and coordination regarding, um, the installation of a new transmission line across the river uh, to sixty-nine kilovolt high-voltage transmission line. It's coming across there at Hepburn Street, and will connect to the, uh, Hepburn Street substation. Um, PPL is doubling basically the carrying ability from a two to four circuits. These power lines will interconnect with the local substations, providing system redundancy and reliability. Their total, um, lump sum not to exceed figure is five thousand dollars. We have a, uh, master services agreement with them from two thousand and eighteen. And there was a amendment to that in January of twenty twenty-two um, for various work orders. And as I said, this is work order number ten on that agreement.
Okay. Um, this does not go to a committee, so any, um, comments, questions from members on item thirteen? Okay. Um, hearing and seeing none then, Mrs. Frank on item thirteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Thank you, Mr. Scott, very much.
Thanks.
Uh, we'll move to item fourteen, except for filing. We have the finance committee meeting minutes from November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Any comments, questions, changes to the meeting minutes? Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on item fourteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Um, item fifteen announcements. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, seven PM here in train transit to third floor. Uh, we will also be having a special meeting of city council this time next week, Thursday, February twentieth at seven PM, um, to discuss the preliminary report of the study for, um, the future of city hall. Um, that will be a work session. There will be a non-voting meeting. Uh, but we will have a presentation from VKV architects on their preliminary findings. We'll have the ability to ask questions. We'll have the ability to get public input, um, on the preliminary findings and have some dialogue about, um, what we see, et cetera. Um, as they make it final, and then we can work off of, um, a level set of data, um, as we decide what we're doing with that issue moving forward. So, um, a little bit later than we wanted to, but, um, it's here, um, which is good nonetheless. Um, and I'm looking forward to that dialogue starting. So. Um, upcoming meetings, uh, Monday, February seventeenth, city hall will be closed for President's Day. Tuesday, February eighteenth, six thirty PM is Historic Architectural Review Board. Um, Wednesday, February nineteenth, ten AM blighted property. Thursday, February twentieth, zoning hearing board at ten thirty. Um, again, seven PM, um, special meeting, um, work session of city council. Thursday, February twenty-fifth, eleven thirty in the morning, redevelopment authority and public safety committee, should there be a meeting? One PM finance committee, two thirty PM, Public Works. Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, nine o'clock in the morning, economic revitalization and, uh, two weeks from today. Thursday, February twenty-seventh, seven PM, city council meeting. Um, are there any comments from members of city council tonight? Any comments from the administration? Any comments from the public? Dave, that's you. Um, any comments from the news media? There, then there is not, none of them are here. Um, I'll take a motion in a second for a German.
So moved.
Second.